Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commission Public Hearing on April 21, 2022 at 6:00 PM at the county center. We will be having a variety of comprehensive plan amendments for the January 2022 amendment cycle this evening. With that, I'd like to also indicate that Commissioner White had an issue that come up, that he was unable to attend and join us this evening. Commissioner Hagan is actually joining us virtually. So with that, I will ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Good evening. Chair Overman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Thank you very much. Okay. Welcome to the Board of County Commission's Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. You know, it's 6:00 PM. What are we going to do here? The Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal of amendments to the future of Hillsborough County's Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for state review. For the amendments being considered for transmittal this evening, a second public hearing will be held for the proposed adoption of those amendments following the state review of the amendments. The Board will also consider the adoption of proposed amendments to the future land map and the text of the comprehensive plan. I will now request that the planning commission staff please introduce the first item on this evening's agenda, which is A1.
Good evening, everyone. Melissa Linehart, Planning Commission Staff. Get my presentation up. Can everyone see it okay?
There we go.
There we go. We're good.
Great. Great, thank you. So I'm here to present unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment 21-21. And there we go. The subject site is located in the eastern portion of Hillsborough County. The site is located south of State Road 60 between Dover Road and Turkey Creek Road, and the site is not located within the limits of a community plan. I should also mention that while this is a text amendment, the text applies to only one area in Hillsborough County. So in this presentation, you'll see a few maps to show where the text applies, but ultimately the request today is only a text amendment, and the future land use map will not be changing with this request. So this is a privately initiated amendment. It is a text amendment to the adopted language under the Energy Industrial Park Section of the future land use element. The subject site is approximately 2,978 acres in size, and the request is to modify existing language in the Energy Industrial Park Section of the future land use element regarding the number of alternative energy facilities that are required on-site. The applicant had previously requested an additional change to the language regarding the buffering and screening under Policy 59.11, but they have withdrawn that portion of the request at this time, and I'll get into that a bit later in the presentation. This is an aerial of the subject site. You'll see that outlined in blue here. Dover Road is the western boundary of the Energy Industrial Park area. State Road 60 is located to the north, and then Turkey Creek to the east, with Durant Road to the south of the subject site. As you can see, there is a CSX line that runs diagonally through a portion of the site, and then there's also land that's owned by TECO, outlined in red here, that is not part of the site, but does run through from Turkey Creek to Durant Road. So again, this red area, the TECO portion, is not part of the Energy Industrial Park area. The Energy Industrial Park Future Land Use category and its associated objectives and policies were originally adopted specifically for vacant lands in eastern Hillsborough County in 2010. That was part of a privately initiated text amendment at that time that created the future land use category itself, and then also the associated policy language. At the time of the text amendment, there was also a map amendment to the site to change the future land use category to Energy Industrial Park. Policies were written based on the topography of the site and also the energy-producing technology at the time. And then there was a large public outreach effort in 2010 during this process. I have a couple of site photos to show you. This is the first one looking north on Dover Road. The site is to the east. The subject property is that vegetated area with the trees in the background, so on the right side. And this is the opposite view, so looking at the subject site from Dover Road facing southeast. And again, the subject site is the tree area. Then we have some existing vegetation along Dover Road, so this shows a sample of the vegetation and the birmingham that's there. And this last photo is from Turkey Creek Road, and again, the subject site is where the trees are. During the workshop on this item last month, the proposed changes to the Energy Industrial Park Section of the Comprehensive Plan included modification of the Birmingham and screening language under Policy 59.11, and that was item number two. Subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting on April 11, the applicant asked to revise their request, remove this change. So to be clear tonight, they have asked to remove any proposed changes to any language under Policy 59.11 in the future land use element with no changes proposed to the Birmingham and screening language. So that brings us to the proposed revision of the text. Currently, the adopted language reads that there needs to be two renewable energy-producing facilities, and the proposed language modification would allow for two options. So either, one, what's in the adopted plan right now in the text, that there be two renewable energy-producing facilities with the required outputs that were established as part of the 2010 rezoning. And the applicant is requesting to add another option, that there be one renewable energy-producing facility with double the required production. And the approved renewable energy sources include biomass, wind, solar, aquaculture, hydroponics, and algae systems. The request has been found consistent with numerous comprehensive plan objectives and policies, including the neighborhood protection policies that are found in the future land use element, specifically Policy 16.1, which says that all neighborhoods should be protected by restricting incompatible land uses through the use of buffering and screening, and also Policy 16.2, which emphasizes the use of professional site planning, including buffering and screening techniques, to help with gradual transitions of intensities between different land uses. The request has also been found consistent with the two objectives and the various policies of the Energy Industrial Park Section of the future land use element, such as Policy 59.1, which states that the Energy Industrial Park area must consist of a mix of renewable alternative energy production and renewable alternative energy resource recovery and research-type facilities with educational employment uses to create a sustainable, viable economic base. And the proposed text amendment has also been found consistent with various environmental policies found in the Environment and Sustainability Section of the Comprehensive Plan, such as Policy 1.1.4, which promotes energy-efficient and sustainable development practices, as well as Objective 1.2, which supports the development and use of alternative energy and fuel. And the request is also consistent with Objective 3.7, which promotes projects and innovations that integrate the pillars of sustainability, which are natural resource protection, community health and well-being, and economic prosperity. The Planning Commission recommended that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Linehart. I appreciate that. Next, we have the opportunity for the applicant to make comment. There's three minutes per applicant. Is the applicant present to make a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair. Tyler Hudson, 400 North Ashley Drive. If I could share my screen briefly.
Okay.
All right. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I know you guys have a long agenda, and out of respect for my fellow travelers on the agenda, I do not want to reiterate exactly what Melissa just said, but would like to draw attention to a couple of points. With me here virtually is Bruce Kajsek, Certified Planner with Alphen Associates, who has some historical experience with this project and can answer some questions that you all may have. I think we're pretty aware at this point where the site is. It's a very significant piece of land that is subject to this unique future land use.
Excuse me. It's a little bit muffled.
Yeah. Can you get a little closer to the microphone, Tyler, so we can hear you a little better?
Does that sound better?
Better? Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So as Melissa alluded to, Energy Industrial Park is a future land use category. Just like you see with RES 4 or SMU 6, what's unique about Energy Industrial Park is, like a custom suit, it was very specifically prepared for a specific piece of land for a specific project. That project in 2010 did not come to pass, and here we are 12 years later, seeking a very, very narrow and specific change to this language. But as I'm going to talk about more, there are going to be future changes through the zoning process to come. As Melissa alluded to, what we are seeking is an alternative way to comply with the renewable production requirements of the Comprehensive Plan, in that instead of providing two of the menu of renewable energy output sources, we are allowed to provide one, but for twice as much. We are not promoting or asking for any changes to anything else in the Comprehensive Plan or in the zoning, except that. Here's the language on screen, which I think Melissa made us familiar with. To the right, you'll see the actual output, and again, that's from the zoning, which we are not proposing to change right now. Those output levels come from the zoning. Here's why we're asking for this amendment. Some of these energy sources, really most of them that are on that menu, simply are not feasible. This is not a wind corridor making wind, really a non-starter. Some of these uses are not really compatible with the adjacent residential development. Biomass gasification is a fairly intensive industrial, has a look to it. Likewise, wind, candidly, the turbines on wind can be quite tall. And with some of the more ancillary renewable categories like aquaculture, hydroponics, and algae, there has simply been no expressed interest at all. But the first bullet point is probably the most important reason why we're here.
Tyler, Mr. Hudson, your time has expired.
Yes.
Do you have another person that would like to use up some more of your time? You have a applicant. Each applicant has three minutes, correct?
Three minutes, that sounded short, but if that's it, I can wrap up now.
Okay. Yeah, three minutes goes by really quick. Do you have another applicant that would like to add to your presentation?
That's really it, Madam Chair. I think there might be some questions on that, so I'm happy to sort of end now and go to questions, but I would like to reserve rebuttal in the event of public comment.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. With that, this is a public hearing, and we have actually individuals signed up to speak upon this particular item. What I will do is recognize your name, and you have three minutes to speak. The first speaker signed up to speak is George Neiman. Is Mr. Neiman available?
Yes. Good evening. George Neiman. I live next to the southern border of the property in question.
Excuse me, one second.
And I know that-
Mr. Neiman, can you get a little closer? Can you guys turn up the volume in here, please? Okay, I'm going to ask Communications to help you a little bit, but get close to the mic as you can. Thank you.
Okay. Is that any better? Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The first item that was eliminated based on the community's outrage, even though that was dropped, I think in the Planning Commission meeting, it was brought out by one of the planning commissioners that maintenance has never been done on those berms, and I would petition the county to use this opportunity to make sure that going forward, that the applicant agrees to maintain the berms as required. That's my belief, that they're required in what was approved. Also, the county bent over backwards in 2010 to accommodate the applicants when it was originally approved, and the applicant's rep opined that, when I brought this up at the Planning Commission hearing, the applicant's rep says, "Yeah, but times have changed." Well, times have changed, possibly, but that doesn't mean we don't need what we were promised. And remember, what was approved, and I think even in Melissa's presentation, what was approved was a mix of renewable energies that were complementary. And what was proposed, just two that were proposed, were the tilapia ponds and then solid waste disposal. One would complement the other. I would maintain that it's not impossible, and it's still certainly doable and desired to have both. We were promised both, and we deserve both. The need for renewable energy has not diminished in the last 10 or 12 years, certainly not. And it's interesting, my understanding is that the Planning Commission staff was told by the applicant's representative that they wanted these changes to possibly help themselves sell the property in the future. Well, I looked through the Comprehensive Plan, and I looked through policies of the county, and I was unable to find anything in there that says we, citizens, or the county should be helping someone sell their property or make it more desirable to sell. That's really not for this venue, and if a person speculates on land, then it's up to them to live up to that agreement. I think the agreement was reasonable. Our community objected. We put up a fight, and we lost it because the commission at that time-
Mr. Neiman, your time is up, sir.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay.
The next speaker signed up to speak is Alethea Hoskins.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Alethea Hoskins. I have lived in Hillsborough County for a good portion of my life, and have seen many changes over the years in this area. While some of them have benefited the community and the businesses, others, I feel, we could live without. In 2010, one of these changes was the rezoning of the Sydney Phosphate Mine to allow for an energy park with the promise that it would deliver at minimum two sustainable energy resources that could generate enough electricity to support over 100,000 homes. Now, 10 years later, the owner is coming back to make changes to the original requirement. These changes are not to deliver an energy park, but to position the property to be sold off to the highest bidder. I have multiple concerns of the landowner's intent for this large piece of land. The owner's original claim that the berms were not stable at the planning meeting on the 11th was questioned by one of the planning commissioners as to why the land was not properly preserved as stated in the original requirements. The truth? The land has never been maintained as required. No preservation efforts have been made over the last 10 years. In addition, unpermitted land clearing has occurred multiple times on the property over the years. I have substantial concerns about the 9.5-acre Superfund site that resides on that property that it continues to be maintained properly. So I oppose both changes, the number of required renewable energy sources and the removal of the berm. While the owner did withdraw that change to remove the berm, it should go on record that the community against the removal now and any requests in the future. We need to hold the landowners responsible for their promises and should be held accountable for the neglect of the property thus far. In closing, I oppose text amendment CPA 21-21, and would expect to see further investigation of the unpermitted activities that occurred so far. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Debbie Holliday. Ms. Holliday?
Yes, I'm here.
You may proceed. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for listening to what I have to say today. I went to the public hearing on April 11 regarding the CPA 21-21 text amendment changes. There were two proposed changes originally by this landowner. One of them was removed after the meeting on 4/11. This one was in regards to the removal of the berms around this property. The reason stated was that they were unstable and they were dangerous. Ultimately, the text amendment changes were approved to move forward to a final vote by the commissioners, four to three. A few days later, I received an email stating that because of the citizens' concern about the removal of the berms, it was decided that the text changes regarding the berms were going to be removed. I talked back about the conversation on the 4/11 meeting and particular statements made by Commissioner Powell. In the original land specifications, he noticed there was a requirement for the existing berms to be preserved. He asked why they had not been preserved in accordance with the current language, and how did we get to this problem now? The response was that the PD is inactive. It was approved, but no one had pulled any permits on it, and that it was waiting on implementation and assumption by someone who goes to develop the property. It was further stated that the PD had been lying dormant since 2010. Commissioner Powell's final statement, and by the way, I think he hit the nail on the head on this one, he said, "Just to me, it just seems like we know there is a problem that existed, and we're trying to remove some language so that, you know, obviate the owner from doing what they need to do." First of all, it sounds like the landowner is trying to shirk his responsibilities. He was obligated to preserve the berms to begin with. The other statement that got me was that no permits were pulled since 2010. I'm here to tell you, I was a witness to an event in June 2018 where big heavy machinery was brought down Martin Road and driven up into the berms, mowing down trees and vegetation. After several agencies were called and arrived, there was a cease and desist order issued. Afterwards, one of the contractors met with four of our residents. He claimed he had the permits to do the work. We found out later they were trying to operate underneath expired permits. To this date, there has been no repair of the damage that was done to the berm. By the way, when questioned about when they came down our road, they stated they didn't think we cared. Well, we do. And now they are requesting that their text amendment changes be approved. They expect the public to trust what they say. Either one do not trust them and do not approve these text amendment changes, and I want to know if they're going to be cited for not maintaining the berm, and what are they going to do about the damage they caused in 2018. I also want to mention that I drive down Dover Road quite frequently. I always notice the berm, and what I've noticed lately is there's a lot of missing trees on the other side of the berm, and I don't think that is due to natural erosion. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Greg Cullen.
Madam Chair, Greg Cullen and our next speaker, Billy Husk, have not signed in.
Okay. And the last speaker I have signed up to speak is Debbie Hunt.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have lived in Hillsborough County for over 35 years, and just recently, in 2017, moved to this Durant, Dover, Turkey Creek area. One of the things that I noted when I purchased my property were the requirements related to this Energy Industrial Park, with the buffering, which was very important to me, and also that there be at least two renewable energy-producing facilities. I think that is also important, and I agree with the prior speakers in their comments about it's not the citizens' nor the county's responsibility to help prepare a property to be sold. I think that the current property owners should be required to fulfill their obligations and that the changes that they have proposed be denied. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. I do not have any other public speakers at the moment, so we can address or give the applicant an opportunity to rebut any questions that were brought up, and then we will open it up for board discussion.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tyler Hudson for the record. Some of the citizen comments you heard, I think, were really focused about this berms issue, about potential code enforcement violations, about whatever the motivations of a property owner might be, which I would respectfully submit to you Commissioners and to the citizens who are here because they love their neighborhood. That's not what's up for discussion really at this very specific juncture in time. What is up for discussion is the fact that this very bespoke and customized approval hasn't worked. It hasn't borne fruit. The project has lain dormant essentially in terms of any type of vertical construction for a dozen years now, and the renewable energy production world has changed a lot in 12 years, and what we're seeking tonight is the flexibility to come back and propose a zoning change that implements the renewable production that we actually want to do. And I want to be very careful about being presumptuous. I don't live in this neighborhood. I live in Tampa Heights, and I want to be very careful about giving any sense that I know or the property owner, anyone knows what's best for the folks who live here. We don't. But by requiring the existing comp plan to stay as is and requiring the production of two different uses, there could be a situation where the only two uses we can find are ones that the neighbors like even less. And the reason we're asking for the ability to find one use that perhaps the neighbors like better and produce it to double the extent in accordance with the policies of this EIP category, that's what we're seeking. We're merely seeking flexibility in the comp plan that, as we all know, the comp plan is implemented by zoning. We're seeking flexibility in the comp plan that we can implement through a zoning change that would be publicly noticed, it would be a public hearing, and it would really get into details about how to make this project work the second time around. So that's really all I have in rebuttal. I would just ask that we really focus on the actual application before you all this evening, which is solely related to flexibility in how renewable energy is produced on this land. And with that, I really thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I'll open it up for board discussion. Are there any questions, concerns?
Yes.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognized?
Thank you. I have several. One is, I was interested in seeing more of, I even had a question about Mr. Hudson's slide that had the different renewable energy and the megawatts produced, or if you could show that.
Yeah. I'm not having to read. Yeah. Let's see. See it? Is that showing up on screen?
So I'll tell you why I was confused, because I was reading through the text amendment that was made in 2010, which, as a citizen in 2010, I never thought it was, I thought it was simply something that broke the urban service line and wasn't a proposal that could really be acted on. And I expected in 2010, as a citizen watching this, that there would come a time in the future that there would definitely be, it would be necessary to change this in whatever way, you know, and I know it is, I guess most of it is formerly phosphate lands. Can you all show, it's a better map that you have that shows the part, I guess TECO, does TECO already own part of it? Can you-
It's just before this slide, I think.
Put this up, too? And TECO owns-
I was talking to myself. The TECO powerline corridor runs, yeah, right, right here.
Oh, I see.
And then that's the CSX line there.
Right, right, right. But so this, so- But so this, so the whole, okay, I see. So, and you were talking about the different energy sources. The thing that confused me was in here it said, "Whatever singular source had to produce twice as much energy as the two sources would." But because there wasn't an output requirement, I didn't see it in the text amendment, I was totally confused about what that would mean. In terms of this, I know you have these, so this would be, this answers that question, kind of like if it was solar, it would be one megawatt, but it would have to be double that?
Yes, Commissioner. The intent is that, and it is a little confusing in isolation, as a broader point, the comprehensive plan, future land use language for this EIP category, I think staff and everyone would concede is unusually detailed. And so a lot of the zoning, which is typically where the detail is, there's a little bit of a redundancy, but the output requirements are in the zoning, they're not in the comprehensive plan.
Oh, I see.
So if this text amendment were to get adopted, the PD would have to get amended to implement that new option to double, and that would probably be the appropriate point to revisit these output requirements, which obviously themselves are quite dated at this point.
Okay. I see. I did not get that because I don't have the zoning in here and I found it confusing when I read it through and I wasn't understanding it. Also, in terms of this, I was, I was very concerned because it says a park will include facilities that generate energy from at least two. Of course, that's to be removed per your request now if we were to do that. From renewable, sustainable energy technologies, which may include biomass to energy, which in my mind isn't very renewable, actually, and I think you started to talk about that and kind of the impacts of that environment and the questions about it to me is a very, a very big question. It's in the language right now that's allowed. Wind, solar, agriculture, municipal solid waste to energy, which I have my issues with, but better than landfilling. But the particular concern to me was actually very much biomass to energy. But I know you're talking now about the zoning and I do understand why, you know, you would limit it to one rather than two, although I, you know, you could, instead of requiring you to put two, you could put two if you ever found that that was a, you could put multiple. I don't, or could they, in the future, if things change, could there, I guess it would be on the rezoning, whether they could, for instance, add another?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. Just to clarify though, what we're proposing is an alternative. So we can, we can, right now it's you must do two. What we're proposing is we must do two or double of one. So we're not totally removing the produce two, we're just creating the option to do double of one. But the types and outputs would, will need to get fixed in the zoning together with implementing the change that you all may approve at an adoption hearing for this text amendment.
And there was also, I guess you had eliminated, now you're agreeing to put it back in, the buffering screening where it was, or similar visual features on the project perimeter with the intent to screen the project. So I guess you at first were going to remove that, but now you're agreeing that that can stay?
Yes, Commissioner. There's a disagreement, as you probably could maybe tell in the citizen, the neighbor input about the berms. We have some belief that they are unstable in certain areas. The neighbors have a belief that they're perhaps in compliance, not compliant with code or that they are, that they are solid. That's a really detailed question and I think our view is that those details are better dealt with either in the zoning or simultaneously with the zoning where there's something more specific to present to the neighbors and to the commission. What we're really trying to do with this super, this very narrow text amendment today is create the flexibility to have something to actually propose because, candidly, this dual-source output requirement with some of these antiquated renewable energy types and antiquated output requirements makes it very challenging to attract the interest of renewable producers.
Sure.
And I don't, I don't say this at all facetiously to anyone of the neighbors, but if folks have concerns about it modified, I think there's really greater concerns about this as-is. And so that's what motivates our application before you this evening.
Right. I could totally agree with that. I wanted to ask something else, too, because I think I heard somebody throw out there something about part of it being a superfund site. Is that accurate information? Is there?
Yes, Commissioner, that is accurate. I would ask Bruce, do you mind weighing in? Bruce Kajshak has been involved with this project since the beginning and can weigh in on that. Bruce, do you mind answering that one?
Good evening, Commissioners. Bruce Kajshak, I believe I'm, you can hear me, Bruce Kajshak with Half Associates, 1000 North Ashley Street. Yes, as Tyler was indicating, I did have the opportunity of been working with this property and the neighborhoods back in 2010 and 2009. And the superfund site was created, oh my gosh, years and I, I'm going to, I haven't, I'm trying, I'm sorry, it's something. It was created a number of years ago. It's been going through cleanup of petroleum type base and it has received numerous clearances now by the federal EPA. It is now just into a monitoring stage. As you, as I recall, this was a petroleum base, it was a petroleum fund or a superfund that was in essence created by the county a number of years ago and has been working with the county on the cleanup of this. And it has, again, gone through years and years of monitoring and years and years of cleanup and it is now to a stage of basically stabilization and to strictly monitoring.
So, in terms of the questions I've asked, and this may or may not be something that the applicant would entertain, but one that I think you might actually find beneficial. And I'm thinking, it's rarely used here, but we've done it. You may not have even thought of it because we so rarely use it. But I'm wondering about, and you, I don't know, you may want to take a little time to think about this, but I'm wondering about bringing it back with a rezoning with it so we could understand better and get an idea in terms of the property uses, comfort, you know, I can definitely see where moving to one source could be a, for everyone involved be a beneficial move. And so I'm just wondering your thoughts about that.
Hey, Commissioner, that's a good question. And I ran out of runway in my presentation, but I was going to bring that up. That's a question. While you say that we need this to then get more specific, why not just start with the specifics? The challenge with that frankly is when potential producers and, aside from renewable energy, there's also some, there's entitlements for non-residential uses for office and, you know, renewable supporting uses. It's proven impossible in the last 12 years and what the property owner has told the project team is that this dual outsourced output requirement is such an albatross that it is not really possible to get folks, potential users, to commit to the type of due diligence to figure out how they would plan something with this being in the comprehensive plan. I mean, it's a, your point's very well taken and it's a great question. The reason that we are pursuing this amendment so narrowly is so that we can come back with something more specifically, but we feel like to present something specific, we have to get this out first. But I would note that, much like a door that has two dead bolts on it, the two out, this requirement for two energy sources is in the comp plan right now and in the zoning. If the Commissioner decides to transmit this to the DEO this evening, that two-source output requirement is still in the zoning. So it really just hastens the need for someone to come and have a more complete holistic plan about how to get this right the second time. But we have thought about that.
Thank you. I kind of wondered about that, so I was trying to figure my way around that. And I kind of agreed with your analysis that you did in the beginning about the feasibility of certain renewable technologies and how it would work. I guess then, I have a pretty strong comfort level with this. If I have, I would like to have simply, and I don't even think it's truly a renewable energy source, the biomass to energy option removed, which you kind of state it wasn't a, wouldn't be necessarily a good fit with, you know, with the surrounding communities, even though they're far off. And I'm, what about your, would you, would that be agreeable?
I literally just texted my clients, ask that. I know that originally the site was, and Bruce can shed some more light on this, was originally entitled for, Bruce, I believe it was biomass and hydroponics, is that right, Bruce?
Yeah, it's got right here, it says, "At least two renewable energy technologies," which may include, it says, "Biomass to energy," which gives me some heartburn, "wind, solar or agriculture," and "municipal solid waste to energy," because this field is ever-changing, "other renewable alternative energy technologies, which I can imagine very well in near future even, shall also be permitted as they are deemed feasible and become available." So that's the whole thing and the only one that gives me some, and even you kind of referred to it as not being a likely possibility. And that's why I wonder if as we, if this is considered tonight, if we could remove that, I could support this.
I think, I mean, one issue I think we would just with that is since all of the specifics about the types and outputs are in the, are in the zoning, I'm assuming we're not creating a confusion where we would say the word biomass in the text amendment in the comprehensive plan where it's not in, or it's not as accurately described in the zoning. I just don't want to create an inconsistency. I don't know, Melissa, if you have any thoughts on that?
Can staff respond to that?
Yes, Melissa Leinhart, planning commission staff. I would agree that we want some consistency with the language.
I would just say that I think the citizens and Commissioners' concerns about that are something that are going to be very well taken by the property owner as they look to the zoning where these specifics are going to be more fleshed out. And I mean, again, we'd like to get a transmittal vote this evening. That is what we are asking for. I think if the commission decides to transmit this, between that and the adoption, we might be able to see if there's some way to sort of excise biomass without creating more issues. But we would like to transmit it in the form currently, knowing that there's a lot more work to be done in the details with the zoning.
Is there any other, I don't know if there's any other staff information or thoughts about that, because we are, we're creating an inconsistency in the zoning and the comp plan amendment at this moment when we go from two to one.
So Commissioners, the zoning currently has resource recovery facility as its primary use in the zoning. Do you think that biomass facility would meet that definition? If it were to come out of the comprehensive plan, then what that would mean is when the zoning is modified, that option would need to come out of the zoning and it would basically preclude that staying in or being considered. So it would create a disconnect between the, what the current zoning is and the comprehensive plan, as is noted, that would be, that would be in place whether, I suppose, two uses with an option for one isn't inconsistent with two uses, but in order to realize that, they would need to modify the zoning. If the biomass facility were to come out in this transmittal, it would necessitate that the zoning change would, would remove, remove that and I would say would preclude development of that under the existing zoning if that were, if that were to occur. So it's something that would need to get conformed with the zoning. That is anticipated, though, that there'll be some conforming zoning changes if this amendment is adopted.
So, if we were to pass this tonight with the biomass to energy plant in the language and it's already in the zoning, that could be, you know, with the rezoning, I mean, do we have, I mean, it seems like it would create a problem if it came back. I'm just thinking this through here. If we came back with a zoning proposal for biomass, it would seem difficult if we already continued to approve it in the comp plan.
If it stays in the comprehensive plan, it remains an option to remain in the zoning. If it comes out of the comprehensive plan, then the zoning would need, it would need to come out of the zoning necessarily to maintain consistency with the rezoning. It is true, though, that this is, whether the board's comfortable with this tonight or dealing with it at the adoption stage, that there will be another opportunity to act on this amendment before, well, before it's actually adopted.
So, so your suggestion is if we did transmittal tonight with this language in it, then we could take it out at the second hearing for this?
Yes, that'd be the option and could have discussions with the applicant, with planning commission staff to, you know, ensure that, you know, any discomfort about that concept could be vetted prior to the board taking final action on the amendment.
Okay. I'll, that finishes my questions.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And honestly, I think coming back with the zoning for more specificity is, is kind of what got us in this mess to begin with. This is the poster child for why, when you're doing a big comp plan amendment, and I was there in 2010 as well, this is a, like 3,000-acre ear hanging out of the urban service area that, the urban service area was expanded, 3,000 acres to, to expand the urban service area to a large area. And the justification and the excuse was, "Don't worry because we know exactly what's going in here, exactly. And it's going to be this Rube Goldberg contraption that's going to raise tilapia and then use the fish excrement to generate energy." I'm not kidding. It was like this crazy, crazy thing that they were promising and we were all thinking, "Oh, this will never work." But it passed as a justification for expanding the urban service area. And what I figured then is, of course, they're going to come back now they've got the urban service area expanded. And, you know, you can never make it rural again once you've got that. So they'll be coming back with some sprawl someday. And, and you've already breached the urban service area. So I am pleased that they're not coming back with asking us, "Hey, we've expanded the urban service area 12 years later, it didn't work, now we..." service area, 12 years later, it didn't work, now we need to put thousands and thousands of cookie cutter housing out here, and you'll have to provide the urban services. If they did do, if anybody ever did do that, I would be very opposed. So, you know, to the neighbors, I think you've got, well, anyway, you've got, my promise that I would be opposed to ever putting urban sprawl out in your neighborhood. But, you know, what, what you have is what you have. You have this entitlements for an energy park and the promise of green energy production. And I feel that this applicant is staying within the, the promise of what this, you know, what, what had been the reason for expanding the urban service area. I, I think that the applicant has been working with the neighbors' concerns about the berms. They were going to want to change the berms, the neighbors didn't want the berms changed, there was a lot of concerns about that, so they've taken that off the table. Now, all we're looking at is, you know, they've got an energy park, can they do one energy source instead of two? That's it. Now, I, I think that makes sense, I think that's a reasonable, you know, thing to ask for here. I'll be, I'll be supporting this. As far as, you know, when to take biomass out of it, I, and, and so what's in front of us is the comp plan amendment to just change that. That I would agree with. When to take biomass out of it, maybe when they, having heard the county, the board's consensus, I think, on that, and it seeming to agree with that as well, they can maybe come back at the adoption with some language, maybe saying where it says, you know, the energy technologies, which may include this, that, and the other thing, maybe if they left it open enough. I get the concern that the current zoning is there, and if we change the comp plan, it would make the current zoning illegal, so it would really leave them in no man's land then, right?
Yes, if that were done, the zoning would need to be changed before any development could occur, the way the zoning is currently approved.
And so there may be some language that they can think of in this, between the transmittal and the adoption, that would indicate that, you know, things include, may include, and it doesn't commit, it just says, energy technologies which may include biomass to energy, wind, solar, blah, blah, blah. If there was some language that, you know, said they would, you know, be considering the kinds of effects that come with biomass or something, I don't know, maybe they can, maybe they can come up with that. But certainly, they've heard us that if they come back with a zoning change, I mean, they can go do the zoning, they can go do an energy park right now, if they were going to raise tilapia and use the fish excrement or whatever, and do biomass to energy, they can do that. And we can't take that from them, so, until they come in for a rezoning. So I'm, the last question, I'm going to move the item, but I will ask a question first. I believe that although this is almost a 3,000 acre space, this text amendment only applies to one area, which is the area where the energy production was going to be, or is that because the zoning only has the energy production in one place?
That's correct. It's, it applies to one area, but a portion of the area, only a portion of that 3,000 acres is designated in the zoning for the, for the energy uses.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, I think what's in front of us is really a narrow thing of allowing a little flexibility in the green energy production, and I'm happy to move that. I think we have a lot more to consider when the zoning comes back. So I'll move that.
Second.
Move transmittal.
We have a motion to, for transmittal, to consider in a second by Commissioner Myers. We're going to do both of these at the same time, if they should go through, so we'll hold with that, assuming there's a positive vote on that, or no, no other comments. Commissioner Kemp, did you have, you have, you're back in the queue. I did have one question that was just related to more the layout. There's reference in the text amendment to road structures, and there's pictures to road structures, and they show where they are, and they show where the Tico line is, but there's no delineation or, or reference or observation of the rail line that runs through there. So I'm going to assume, you know, assuming always gets you in trouble, but I would assume that there, that in itself is protected and does not, by omitting any mention of it, where we do make mention of the road structure around it, it doesn't necessarily change that as being an available, there is a lot of freight that goes through there on occasion, so I was just curious, it wouldn't change that scenario, would it? Does this, this would not impact that or change any provision associated with rail traffic, rail right-of-way in that area?
No, it would not have any effect.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to confirm, because I didn't, it was just omitted. There was just no mention of it whatsoever, but it's on the map, whereas the roads were mentioned specifically. That's why I thought I'd ask that question. Okay, Commissioner Kemp, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I appreciate the discussion, and like you, Commissioner Smith, I very much realize the horse is out of the barn already, that happened, you know, 12 years ago. And so it is, it is what it is. And I could imagine some scenarios that I would be extraordinarily pleased with, but we don't quite know what those are, but I was, and the reason I had the biomass discussion is that I was concerned about, you know, what I read about biomass and the prevalence of it, and so I was, I was just concerned about where to state that in case of the possibilities. So I will, I'll be supporting as well.
Excellent. So do we need to take the resolution at the moment?
I would ask the board to take a vote on each of the amendments as a straw vote, and then at the end of the section of transmittal amendments, we'll ask for a vote on the resolution to approve the two, if both are transmitted. If not, then both, the ones that are transmitted would be part of that motion on the resolution.
Excellent. We don't do this very often, so, okay. Commissioner Cohen.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. I just, one, very briefly, first of all, to thank Commissioners Kemp and Smith for shedding light on what happened 12 years ago, because it's interesting, and it, what it says to me, and what I want to say to the people that wrote in and spoke and expressed concern about this, is that the likelihood for a good outcome here is, I think, much better with what we are doing tonight than it would be if this thing got blown up, or if there was still an insistence on, on two, because the likelihood of either of those things is, it would be more intrusive than what's liable to come back to us with just one thing. And we could end up with something very good, something that really provides a renewable energy, as opposed to, you know, land that is deemed unsuitable for all sorts of things, and then they come back and say, well, we have no choice but, but to develop it. So I think that this is the best chance of something good to come on this property.
Okay, not seeing any other comments. I don't see Commissioner Hagan's hand up, so I'm assuming we'll take a straw vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent, thank you, thank you very much. The next item is A2 HCCPA 22-02, Intergovernmental Coordination Element Text Amendment. I'm going to allow the Planning Commission to explain this, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. If HTV could share my PowerPoint and go to the second slide. Next slide, please. So as the title indicates, this is a process we're going to, to update the Intergovernmental Coordination section of your comprehensive plan. This was a publicly initiated text amendment, it was last done in 2008, so as you can imagine, there's a lot of housekeeping and updated, the updates that needed to be done. We presented the information to you in a strike-through and underlined format, where the strike-through text is proposed to be deleted, underlined text is new. In the back of your packet, there's also policy crosswalk, so you can compare the existing policy with the proposed policy. If I could have the next slide? So what is the purpose of this? Obviously, we want to ensure that we are coordinating the activities and responsibilities of other local governments, other agencies with Hillsborough County, to be sure that we are providing efficient and effective services to our communities. If I could have the next slide? So I was going through just a little general summary of all the things that we've done to this document. Of course, this presentation is a little bit text-heavy, but we, we updated and streamlined the introduction, the inventory and analysis, and the future needs and alternatives. These are considered background documents and aren't typically adopted by the elected body, but they are important information to give context to the goals, objectives, and policies. We created several new policies and revised others to allow it to future, to do, conduct future evaluations, and also to implement the comprehensive plan. And particularly, we also have modified policies to address how we're going to review development impacts that affect that plan, and particularly those that are cross jurisdictional boundaries or are but jurisdictional boundaries, to be sure that we are coordinating in an efficient manner with those other jurisdictions. If I could have the next slide? So I've included just a couple examples of new and revised policies, just so I can share some of those with you. Policy 1.1.4 deals with how the Planning Commission will be responsible for research, data collection, and analysis that support the comprehensive plan, and also responsible for sharing that data. 1.2.6 deals with how the county wishes to open discussions with the three municipalities in Hillsborough County, to refine our existing annexation policies, to provide information in a more timely manner, and to ensure that we're creating an efficient development pattern. Initially, if you recall in our workshop, this policy was those discussions we were proposing to begin in 2025. You indicated to us that you felt that that was too passive, and now we have changed that policy, so they would begin pretty much at the point of adoption of this element, which would allow us to move forward at the end of 2022. If I could have the next slide? Here's another policy, kind of a related manner, 1.2.7, and again, this is objective dealing with those earlier discussions with the municipalities, to identify and implement joint, joint planning areas with each of those cities. We think that that's a good place for those discussions to occur and those policies to be placed, since not only the board accounting commissions, but all the three municipalities' elected boards will also weigh in and concur and endorse this. And it would deal with issues such as the municipal annexation, but also impacts to our infrastructure and service delivery, particularly transportation. If I could have the next slide? We added policies related to the coordination of environmental and infrastructure planning. We also moved to a more prominent location policies that related to the coordination of planning and programming of educational facilities. The edits were rather minor, but we, we felt it was important to put it in a more prominent location, based on the importance of that particular issue. We also updated policies associated with how the county interacts with the Hillsborough County Planning Commission, and also our transportation planning organization. Next slide? So here's a couple more examples of some policies, these ones actually are new policies. One is just to maintain our membership on the Tampa Bay Water Board of Directors, and to ensure that we have a sustainable drinking water supply for the region. Another policy relates to how to coordinate with our partner agencies to consolidate infrastructure, particularly like power, gas, water, and wastewater utilities in the same road, road right-of-ways, so we have the least amount of impacts possible to our environment. Next slide? We did remove references to the council of governments. They have not, they have a very infrequent meeting schedule, and many of their roles have been supplanted by other groups, and really felt it was redundant. Doesn't mean the council of governments can't continue to meet and participate, but it would not necessarily be required of the comp plan. We redefined policies related to the coordination of social services, using the more broader term economic, excuse me, using the more broader term of underserved communities, rather than the limiting term of economically disadvantaged groups. You did have some questions on that at your workshop, and I'll address those in a later slide. We also included some minor edits dealing with public services and conflict resolution. And probably the most substantive changes in Intergovernmental Coordination element based on this update is to create a new objective and related supporting policies to coordinate planning activities that promote sustainable and resilient communities in Hillsborough County. If I could have the next slide? So this is the first, this is the only objective, and the first two policies of eight are related to promoting sustainable and resilient communities within our, within Hillsborough County. And in particular, I would point out a point, policy 1.10.2, which talks about our participation with the Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Coalition, and also the work that we've already done, and also to implement the Hillsborough County Sustainability Action Plan. So these gives you some of the ideas and some of the issues that we want to address in this particularly important endeavor that we've been tasked to, to, to address. If we could have the next slide? So if you recall, we did have a workshop with you on March 21st, and you gave staff several directions, and we believe we've, we've met those directions. Of course, there's always opportunities to continue to modify the document and tweak it as needed. It was noted that there were several areas where you wanted to call out and specifically note FDOT and MacDill Air Force Base and some other partner agencies, and we have done that. Those, all of these changes that were made since the workshop are highlighted in yellow in your packet, so they're easy to locate. I've already mentioned in my presentation that we've accelerated the timeline to initiate the discussions on annexations and joint planning areas from, from 2025 up to 2022. We also added the requirement, based on your discussions, of having similar infrastructure and planning discussions with our neighboring counties and cities by 2025. That doesn't mean you can't start earlier than that, but that's the latest date, and we were thinking that since there, these, the same staff will probably be working on all these, it was better to kind of offset those dates a little bit. You noted in your workshop that what was the definition of underserved communities, and where are they located? And we did a little, I did a little bit of research, I was unaware of this, but other members of our staff were fully versed. As in your recently adopted mobility section, there is an underserved community definition, and there also is a map showing these locations. So rather than repeating that, I placed a cross-reference from the Intergovernmental Coordination section to that new mobility section. And also, there was a note about the work that was done on the Hillsborough County Sustainability Action Plan, so that was noted, and also talked about how we will coordinate its implementation. Next slide? So we did review this, the proposed document by the current comprehensive plan for Hillsborough County. It's consistent with all the elements, but in particular, these goals, objectives, and policies are particular note, and their full text is in your packets, but they relate, of course, to future land use, transportation, schools, recreational open space, and Intergovernmental Coordination issues, and we do feel it is consistent. Next slide? We did conduct a virtual meeting to garner public input. We did conduct a virtual meeting to garner public input, and that was conducted on February 22nd. We, I've already noted in detail the workshop that we had with you on March 21st. We presented this material to the Planning Commission at a hearing on April 11th. They did find the materials consistent with your comprehensive plan. Of course, we're here requesting your direction to transmit this to the DEO for their review. Of course, we can continue to work on any app, issues that we, that you feel we need to in the interim. And right now, we have a projected adoption hearing date of June 16th. If I had the next slide, please? And with that, our Planning Commission staff recommends that you direct us and your staff to transmit this to the Department of Economic Opportunities and other state agencies for their review and compliance with Chapter 163 Florida statutes. Chairman, that completes my presentation, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I appreciate that. Well done. Seems like you covered all the bases. I did notice in the backup that we heard response back from several of the agencies, including, I believe, Temple Terrace, but I don't recall seeing anything from the City of Tampa or Plant City. Did I just miss that, or is that in some other wonderful gigantic document somewhere?
I do not recall any commentary received from City Tampa, but Plant City did respond that they had no comment or objection.
Okay, all right. I mean, given that this is an idea of actually working together, it'd probably be a good idea to see if, who we're working with, what they thought of it. But if they haven't responded when they asked, I'm assuming that no, no response was not an issue, so, or just not, there was no issue to address. Let's rephrase that. Yeah, exactly. And thank you for the answer on the issue associated with underserved. I had a feeling it had a closer connection to mobility and other areas of our comp plan, so I appreciate that clarity. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'll be supporting this, but I'll want to know more information. I'm just wondering about, I don't know what it's numbered now exactly, but it's, it was Policy 4.4, and it's been, that's crossed through. It's number one, cooperatively implement development criteria compatible with the establishment of regional transit services in the county's comprehensive plans. And is that referring to working with heart?
I believe in part that is worth working with heart. You are correct.
And so do we, I guess I'll, I want to see whatever those are, but, and who else is that working in coordination with for transit?
Well, I believe there also is some cross-county connections, you know, with the PSTA and the Citrus connection, so I'm sure there's some other transit connections as well, but primarily heart.
Okay. Anyway, I'll, I'll look that more closely at the county's comprehensive plans to see exactly what that, that states in between.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. So I, I think at the workshop, yeah, we talked about, one of my concerns is that when we annex, or when a city annexes property out of the county, then they get the taxes, but we're still stuck with the county roads that go through the, the property that now is paying taxes to the city. And, you know, I, I just think we should have some way of having a policy that says if you take, if, when you're annexing county land and getting those county taxes, now you take it all. You take the infrastructure. You are responsible for that. We have ended up with, let's see, well, we've ended up with some roads in, in thousands of acres of annexations that we're still on the hook for maintaining. And sometimes that's problematic when we have roads in, in the city that the citizens want, you know, repaved or maintained, or they're concerned about adding Vision Zero facilities, and it's, it's our, and the city says, well, go ask the county to pay for that because it's still our road. So in working with staff on this, I, you know, just, let me just ask staff tonight because I keep running into, this isn't the place to do that, but why not? We're talking about annexation. Why, why aren't we doing it here? And if we're not doing it here, how, where can we do it?
Commissioner, is that posed to myself?
Yes, any, anyone on your end that, that wants to?
Well, our thought as staff was that the appropriate location for that policy was in your joint planning agreement, because that would be negotiated between the municipalities and the county, and all the elected bodies would, would sign off on that. We could put a policy of that nature in your comprehensive plan. However, that doesn't necessarily have the buy-in of the municipalities because they, they have no authority to vote on, on, you know, a policy of that nature. So I think it's a very valid concern and one that desperately needs to be addressed, but we just thought it would be more, there would be more opportunity for success if it was worked out as part of the joint planning agreement rather than a policy in the comp plan. Now, we could, the policies that deal with the joint planning agreement in the ICE, we could make that more explicit to the issues that you want to address. We've left that a little bit vague at this point to not kind of growl the discussion in. But, but that was our general thought that, you know, that would cover that issue and that would work out with those discussions with each of the cities that begin later this year.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I think it'd be hard to, to get cities to agree on the face of it that anytime they annex, I think it'd be easier to start in the comp plan with at least some general, it's our preference, we want to encourage. You know, we do a lot of stuff in the comp plan that is not required or restricted, but just says, you know, it, we, we encourage municipalities to take on the responsibilities of infrastructure maintenance when they do annexation. And that wouldn't, that wouldn't need any, you know, I mean, that wouldn't be holding anybody to something, but it would at least be, give us something we could point to and say, in general, the county prefers, prefers it this way when there's annexation done. It doesn't mean it can't be done another way, but it just would be something that encourages it.
Well, Commissioner, there, there's adequate time to develop that language, and we could definitely develop language of that nature as an additional policy between this transmittal and, and your adoption hearing in June.
Would you like a motion to that effect to make sure that you understand the board direction, or? How, how about I make that motion to direct staff to develop language that would indicate the county's preference for encouraging cities to take on responsibilities of infrastructure or operation and maintenance when they, when that infrastructure is, is included in an annexation? And then we can, you know, we can vote on that when it comes back, or we can discuss it a little bit more, but I, I'll just make that motion that we, and I've got, yeah.
Commissioner Smith has a motion, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I know we talked about this before, and it's a great point to bring up, and I can't quite remember the outline of the conversation. I would think that there's a, a large body of law around statutory and maybe even, you know, case law and challenges around annexation issues like that. And I'm, I'm wondering if it might be something that is governed by all that, not that encouraged couldn't be a word or a joint, but I'm just, the other thing I'm wondering about is if, if indeed it doesn't allow for or doesn't require what you're suggesting, that maybe, quite honestly, it should be on our legislative agenda to have that altered if, you know, for however, whatever purposes we could. But we do have, I mean, the county, for instance, you know, Bruceby Downs, Howard Avenue, Bayshore, there is all kinds of.
Columbus.
Yeah, Columbus jurisdictional roads that, you know, were at one time county roads that I think that would, it would make sense to, you know, and I imagine there's many more in areas that I don't know of, particularly Plant City with a lot of annexing, you know, happening there that there, that there may be. I don't know, but I'm thinking that that would probably be true. And I think we probably do have to maybe put that as a topic and just figure, figure that out, but I agree with what your suggestion is here.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I was just wondering. I've never, I don't believe I've ever voted on an annexation before, briefly. How does it work in terms of the process?
Again, Commissioner, is that posed to myself?
Whoever can answer it.
Okay. I'm most familiar with the annexation process as a Plant City, a little less dealing with Temple Terrace, and someone else would need to jump in concerning annexations and how they're processed for Tampa. But typically, what occurs is a private property owner approaches the jurisdiction. They request to be voluntarily annexed into the municipality. The municipality studies that and determines if they feel it's appropriate and that they can serve that community, not necessarily with the transportation issues you're speaking here, but, you know, usually with utilities and police and fire and things of those nature. If they feel that it is appropriate for them to allow that to come into the municipality, they direct their staff to seek commentary or comments from the other agencies, the county being one, and they can weigh in and offer comments. And then it goes to their elected body for final dispensation. And then, of course, that starts the process of, then it requires a plan amendment after that to be, to change that county land use to a municipal land use, and ultimately a zoning and moves forward from there.
So it, it comes to this board for a vote at some, at some point in the, in the process?
No, it comes, it all goes to the municipalities elected body.
It never comes to this board at all? Well.
Not to my knowledge.
I mean, it's unbelievable then that, 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 no, no, seriously, that they could annex our property and leave us with responsibility for the infrastructure. I mean, that, that's, I mean, I don't think that's a small thing, so I think that it's very, I mean, I think the lightest thing that we should say is that we encourage them to take it. And I, and I do think if we're going to develop language, that we ought to talk about whether the language ought to be stronger, or, or because, I mean, it, it doesn't sound like we have any control over our own destiny unless we put some language in to toughen it up. Adam, I'm looking at you, so.
Yes, I agree.
I think most of the process is dictated, as the other commissioner noted, in the, in the statutory requirements of Florida dealing with annexation. So I believe the jurisdictions, in this case, the municipalities are following that process.
That is, that is the challenge, is that the current structure doesn't allow the county to stop an annexation for basically, say, jumping over a right-of-way and jumping over that right-of-way doesn't divest it of being contiguous to the land that's being annexed. And so that, there's very little currently actual authority to stop that from, from occurring.
Okay, well, I think we should move forward then.
Thank you. I was going to say we should stick some language in there, though. I agree with Commissioner Smith. You know, it is, this is one of the challenges Hillsborough County is facing. We have, you know, a non-municipal county that is larger than any of our municipalities combined, that is built in such a way that the residents expect urbanized services that are typically in line with municipal services. So we don't have a say in the annexation and what we have to stay responsible for, but the city could come in and say, hey, but we would like to include this for our tax base, but we're not going to provide any of the services necessary in a significant way, you know? So if it's limited to, to police and fire, which is a very big piece of a budget, I have to give it that. But we keep, you know, the libraries and the roads and the, you know, where does water and sewer fall into this? Where does all of the other, you know, land design fall into all of this when they do the planning? And yet, we're, we just approved to put out to the ballot a, a plan to actually, you know, share dollars for that infrastructure with the municipalities as they plan inside their own area, but we still have the responsibility at the county level to take care of those of which we own inside those municipalities. So I think it would be wise to, to at least list where possible, under the annexing statute law, that infrastructure does need to be more clearly identified as being who keeps that responsibility in any of the agreements that go forward, and where, and we explore where that's possible, because I think that is the only fair thing to do, because it does put a financial burden on all of the county to take care of areas that, that are inside the municipal area that's been transferred without necessarily a tax revenue to support it. And that's, that's, that becomes important, I think, that if, where it's possible. So can, is there time to bring it back by the next hearing to address that issue and provide us with some sample language to consider?
Yes, there's absolutely time for that, and there is. And I will note that this is an issue that, that's on the radar at the staff level, and there have been discussions with municipalities about taking over roads that are proximate to them, so it is, you know, it is a negotiation at this point, but it is very much on, on the radar, and many people in the administration have been working to try to encourage at least.
And it's not always just about annexation. You know, when we find two, you know, the county and the city on the same road, and we're trying to figure out how to design what that road looks like, and as far as the residents are concerned, it's just their neighborhood, or it's just their community. And, and yet, there's two different sets of rules on how things get done, or what we agree to, or what the land code says, and that is causing significant cost and delay when looking at an opportunity to best serve that community. So I, I do like the idea of the inter-local, inter-jurisdiction, which was way too much mouthful to say, but, you know, intergovernmental coordinating element, I think was very beneficial, but I do think that we need to get some more clarity and where annexation falls into a financial obligation, and maybe that needs to be part of it. Maybe they, we do keep the, the road, but we come up with an inter-local agreement on the maintenance, which we already have in some cases. It just needs to be better clarified. I think that if we can't do the, pass it all on, then pass on the cost and, and in a shared agreement is part of the intercoordination element. So with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Is that Kemp, Kemp? And did you, Commissioner Kemp, did you? It was Cohen, but Commissioner Kemp has a question. You're recognized.
Right, thank you. No, I just wanted to add, I think it's a really good discussion. Just for the record, the library is paid with a special ad-alarm tax that everyone pays, so it's not us paying for roads, or it's not as similar to the, the road situation. And even though the city of Tampa, for instance, is just like 27% of the population, they provide about 40% of the tax basis, just again, for information. But when they go from being a county, we're paying for it, and we have a 4.3 millage on our unincorporated county resources, but at the cities, all three of them, Temple But at the cities, all three of them, Temple Terrace, Tampa, and city of Plant City, they have something close between 6.7 and 6.9 mils for their cities. So I'm trying to make the point about how stretched our resources are in terms of us then funding that. Although I guess it comes out of, actually, when we fund those other roads, I'm pretty sure it comes out of our countywide resources to do that. I'm sure, in fact, I'm positive now that I'm thinking about it. But it's still, you know, a, something that we have to do that I think is, we should be negotiating, negotiating it away or have the ability to do so.
Exactly. So that's an actual motion to make the changes rather than a straw, send it along the way. So I was not seeing any other comments. Can we get a roll call vote?
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay. And then with that, do we want to still send it on to, for review? Ms. Lundgren?
And prior to doing that, if you could just ask for a public hearing or ask for any participants? I do not see anyone signed up, but just for the purpose of the record.
Oh, yes, right, I'm sorry. This was a public hearing. Yep, there were no, there were no individuals signed up for this public hearing. And seeing none, we will, I will take a vote for her to transmit, a straw vote to transmit.
Move to transmit.
Move to transmit. My Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Kemp and Myers. Can you please take a roll call?
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, five to zero.
Excellent. So now we need a vote to consider a resolution for the transmittal of the CPA 2021 and CPA 2020, I'm sorry, 20202 for state review, including the individual amendments, which, which we haven't made amendments at this point, but under consideration.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Hearing no other comments or questions, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, five to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we're going to open up the public hearing for adoption of large-scale plan amendments. The first one is B1. Planning Commission can introduce the amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Papandrou with your Planning Commission staff. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. presenting HCCPA 21-22, Big Ben Road and US Highway 41. And this did come before you in January for transmittal. Subject site is located in the southwestern portion of the county, just west of US Highway 41. This is a privately initiated map amendment. The site is composed of five parcels and approximately 104.76 acres. It is within the urban service area, the coastal high hazard area, and the Apollo Beach and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plans. This is an aerial showing the subject site and the surrounding properties. The site is on Big Ben Road and is west of US Highway 41. It is five parcels. The parcels to the north on Big Ben Road are vacant and the parcels, or excuse me, are vacant and public utilities. And the parcels to the south are just vacant uses. Existing land uses surrounding the site include vacant land, light and heavy industrial, public utilities, agricultural, light commercial, and office uses. The adopted future land use category is community mixed-use 12. The light industrial future land use category surrounds the site on the east, west, and south. To the north and northwest is the heavy industrial future land use category. The proposal before you today is changed to the heavy industrial future land use category. This shows the subject site facing north on Big Ben Road. Existing land uses are public utilities and vacant land. This shows the subject site on the southern portion of Big Ben Road. Existing use is vacant land. This is facing east of the site towards US Highway 41. Across the intersection are numerous land uses, including light commercial, vacant, light industrial, public institutional, heavy institutional, daycare, and heavy commercial land uses. And this is facing west of the site towards Big Ben Road. Further west are public utilities and vacant land. Moving from community mixed-use 12 to the heavy industrial future land use category would remove the residential density allowed on-site. It would allow for limited accessory residential, which would be an onsite security guard. It would also increase the FAR to 0.75, which could not be applied to processing, storage, or outdoor storage uses. And if approved, the plan amendment would remove the residential, community scale retail, commercial, office, research corporate park, and mixed-use multipurpose land uses, and would introduce heavy industrial and rural scale neighborhood commercial land uses. It would also remove the mix of land use requirements for projects 20 acres or greater. Staff did not receive any agency objections based on the comments sent. Planning Commission staff is finding this plan amendment to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future land use element. The proposed amendment would result in a reduction in density and an increase in intensity that would be compatible with the development pattern in the surrounding area. And their request fulfills the intents of policies 1.4, 16.1, 16.2, 16.3, and 16.5. It is also consistent with policy 28.2, which recognizes working waterfronts as an important economic generator for the county. Removing the potential for residential dwelling units meets policy 10.6, which does not allow density bonuses in order to direct residential population growth away from vulnerable coastal areas. And all these policies are located in your packet. Planning Commission staff is also finding this plan amendment to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the coastal management element. The site is located within the coastal high hazard area, and the plan amendment change to heavy industrial would ensure that any development will go through a site planning process, and the applicant will need to provide data that shows any impacts to infrastructure. And these policies are also located in your packet. The site is in the Apollo Beach in the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plans. The proposed is consistent with strategy number seven of the Apollo Beach Community Plan. While the proposed amendment is for a heavy industrial future land use designation, it will allow for light industrial uses and support the intent of the community plan. It is also consistent with goal two and objective one of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan. The proposed will provide additional economic development opportunities and will allow industrial land uses. Based on this, Planning Commission found HCCPA 21-22 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. That concludes this presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. With that, is the applicant present to provide a presentation? There's three minutes per applicant for this.
Madam Chair, yes, Kristin Moore with Tampa Electric Company. I don't have a presentation for you this evening. I think this, you know, the commissioners had a comfort level with this at the last time, the transmittal hearing. So I'm here if you have any questions today or would like to discuss this matter further, but no specific presentation.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions at the moment, but this is a public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak to the hearing, so I'm assuming you don't need a rebuttal. But I would like to ask a question. This is more of staff rather than the applicant, because I don't know that we asked this question. Currently, the land appears to be, you know, covered with a lot of trees and bushes and greenery and things like that that absorb water and do a great job at doing so oftentimes. When this were to move to another purpose that would become light industrial, I would assume that all of those trees and things that absorb water in a high coastal area would be removed. Is there any provision in high coastal areas to retain as much foliage, you know, water-absorbing foliage as possible in order to retain not only the soil structure but also the water absorption when flooding does occur?
We have regulations that encourage the maximum retention of onsite vegetation, but also recognizes that it has to be removed through development. So we don't have a per se requirement to retain it. However, the post-development state of the property would need to have a stormwater system that designed to have no increase in the rate of discharge from the pre-development state than the post-development state of the property. In other words, we can't exacerbate the rate of stormwater coming off the site. But there is, regulations do contemplate that vegetation would be removed, and certain sizes of trees are required to be replaced or mitigated. But the primary stormwater focus would be on the stormwater management system, which would get permitted by both the county and SWIFTMUD.
Okay. I just was curious, because it's pretty low there. And, you know, taking down all the height would actually eliminate the ability to absorb water by a lot of big trees. So I was just curious. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other questions.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by approval by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Do a straw vote?
Madam Chair, prior to announcing the vote, I'd like to make a correction for the record. I did announce five to zero for the resolution. I did not hear Commissioner Hagan. Upon further review, that motion passed six to zero.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Chair Overman?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I think we have Commissioner Hagan now, right? Okay, excellent. We just didn't hear you. Okay, yes.
Thank you. Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. The next item is item B2, HCCPA 21-23, Coastal High Hazard Area Update. Planning Commission?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sean College with Planning Commission staff. This is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21-23, an update of the future land use map with the coastal high hazard area. I'll go ahead and share my screen and see a brief presentation. So this is a publicly initiated plan amendment. The state has recently updated the coastal hazard area. The update of the comprehensive plan is required by law to be in compliance and show the new coastal high hazard area. This is somewhat of a housekeeping item, I would characterize it as, because the local governments have no discretion over what is the coastal high hazard area. It is set by the state, and state law requires the comprehensive plan to be updated with the new area. So this amendment would update the future land use map with the new area. The current future land use map is on your screen now, and the change would update it to the new future land use map with the change of the new coastal high hazard area. With that, we would recommend, and the Planning Commission has recommended, that you adopt this comprehensive plan amendment. And I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I don't see anyone signed up to speak to this item at the moment, and there's no one in the audience, so if there's.
Move approval?
Second.
With Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please take a straw vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next item is B3, HCCPA 21-28, the 10-year water supply facilities update. And the Planning Commission can introduce the amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This is the adoption hearing for a text amendment 21-28 to the county's.
Mr. Guerra, could you get a little closer to the mic? It's a little difficult to hear you.
So, good evening, Commissioners. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This is the adoption hearing on text amendment 21-28 to the county's comprehensive plan. This amendment serves as a 10-year water supply facilities work plan update, which is a regular update to the comprehensive plan and occurs every five years. This is a publicly initiated amendment, and the 10-year water supply facilities work plan is required to be updated following the regional water supply plan adoption, which occurred in November of 2020. Non-adopted, the non-adoptable backup documentation included in the packet includes a detailed analysis report that examines projections, sources, and project options. This was a multi-agency coordination effort with information provided by county staff, Tampa Bay Water, and the Southwest Florida Water Management District. This is an update to the One Water chapter by replacing the existing table with the one in your packets. Additionally, we currently are working on updating the capital improvement element to the comprehensive plan, which will address levels of service and pressure. And the update is scheduled to be part of the July plan amendment cycle. The purpose of the update is to fulfill the statutory requirement to update the 10-year water supply facilities work plan with updates to the work plan table found in the One Water chapter, as I previously stated. Planning Commission staff examined the plan amendment with respect to goals, objectives, and policies, and found the plan amendment consistent with undergovernmental coordination and One Water chapter policies related to ensuring consistency of the plan and SWIFTMUD Southwest Florida Water Management District's regional water supply plan, conservation aquifer recharge policies related to alternative water supply, reuse, and conservation. The amendment is also consistent with One Water chapter's policy to satisfy potable water demand. Ladies and gentlemen, Planning Commission staff recommends the proposed text amendment CPA 21-28 be adopted into the unincorporated Hillsborough County's comprehensive plan. Commissioners, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that presentation. This is a public hearing. There is an opportunity to speak, if there are any. I do not see anyone signed up to speak to this item, and we'll consider a straw vote for this, and then we'll take on the vote for the ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This is motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith and Myers. Please take a straw vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. So I need to have a motion to consider an ordinance for the adoption of the CPA 21-22, CPA 21-23, and CPA 21-28 for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no other comments or questions, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We're moving on to the small-scale plan amendment adoption public hearing. The next item to consider is item B4, that's HCCPA 22-03, future land use map change for West Hillsborough Avenue and Racetrack Road. The Planning Commission will introduce this amendment.
Madam Chair, we'd like to ask for a continuance on this.
Madam Chair, we'd like to ask for a continuance on this, if I may please.
It's the board's pleasure.
I would like to take the great liberty to ask for a continuance of the case so we can have a full board.
Excuse me, please state your name.
I interrupted it because I didn't want to waste the board's time listening to its staff report and then making a decision of what you wanted to do.
Okay. Mr. Pressman, you will have an opportunity to speak after the Planning Commission addresses the issue, I think, but what is the legal process for addressing a request for a continuance at the last second?
It's really the pleasure of the board to consider the request for a continuance. It's not provided for as of right, but the board may consider that.
It's the board's pleasure.
Our request is based upon having a full board, Madam Chair.
Oh, right, because we don't have a full board tonight.
Point of order, that still doesn't, as long as there are six members present, which there are, correct? So it's not by right.
Correct. It's not by right that the applicant can ask for a continuance with six members. It's up to the board if the board wishes to allow that continuance.
Well, it's the board's pleasure. I'm okay with continuing it.
I'll move a continuance. I'll just say, if I could be recognized...
Sure, sure. I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
To me, it would, since it's, as you point out, it's not a matter of right, and we have plenty of commissioners to take a vote and to take action. To me, it would hang on whether there were community citizens who had showed up. I've been in that position myself before and had the applicant ask for continuance at the last minute and feel in that instance, you know, we should go ahead and allow the citizens to speak and to have the hearing. But given that there's no...
Public hearing, and there's no public comments signed up.
There's no public showing up expecting, who've been waiting for a long time to do this, I'm fine with moving up for a continuance.
Is there a second?
Rather do it now than after the report.
Right.
Right. Yeah, it is getting a little late, and it'll save a lot of folks' time, and they'll give the applicant a chance to address whatever their concerns are.
And Madam Chair, our next meeting would be June 16th.
June 16th? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, June 16th it'll be.
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM.
Excuse me, would the applicant representative please state their name for the record?
I'm sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 of St. Petersburg.
Did you get that, clerk? Okay, good. Thank you. So with... I'm sorry. Yes. No, no. I just want to make sure you were... So we'll just, we don't need to vote on the continuance, or we do?
You do.
Okay. Could we take a roll call vote, please?
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried 6 to 0.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is B5, HCCPA 2204, future land use map change, Causeway Boulevard and South 90th Street. And the Planning Commission can introduce the amendment.
Good evening. Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission Staff. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission Staff. This is HCCPA 22-04, Causeway Boulevard and South 90th Street. This is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment. The site is approximately 5.26 acres, and the request is to go from the community mixed use 12 to the residential 20 future land use category. The site is located in the middle of the county, in the Tampa Urban Service Area, and the Greater Palm River Community Plan. This shows the subject site and the surrounding areas. The site is south of Causeway Boulevard, east of South 90th Street, and west of US Highway 301. The site is currently vacant, and according to EPC comments, there are no wetlands on I would also like to add that there is an approved PD on site for 38 mobile homes and 57,400 square feet of commercial general uses. This is looking south on Causeway Boulevard towards the subject site. This is looking east down Causeway Boulevard towards US Highway 301. Immediately to the east of the site are vacant and multifamily properties. Further northeast across Causeway Boulevard are vacant public utilities and light industrial land uses. Looking north of the subject site, across street on Causeway Boulevard, is currently listed as land uses for a single-family residential and vacant lots. However, there is an approved PD from 2019 for manufacturing, industrial, and commercial Looking west of the subject site on Causeway Boulevard, immediately to the west of the site are single-family residential and vacant properties and the Causeway Park. The existing adopted future land use category is community mixed use 12. Community mixed use 12 surrounds the site on the east, west, and south. North across Causeway Boulevard is residential 9 and urban mixed use 20. Other future land use categories in the immediate surrounding area are residential 20, regional mixed use 35, and office commercial 20. The proposal before you today is to change the residential 20 future land use category. So the existing community mixed use 12 category allows up to 63 units and a .50 FAR, approximately 115,000 square feet. Moving to the potential residential 20 future land use category would increase the density to 105 units, and it would increase the intensity to a .75 FAR, approximately 172,000 square feet. Any non-residential development over a .35 FAR must be for office or residential support uses and not retail. And if approved, the neighborhood commercial land uses would be permitted, and light industrial, research, corporate park, the community scale retail, commercial uses would no longer be Planning Commission Staff did not receive any objections from reviewing agencies. The site is consistent with the comprehensive plan and policies directing growth to the urban service area and neighborhood protection compatibility policies in the future land use element, specifically Policy 16.2, which requires a gradual transition of intensities between different land uses, using professional site planning, buffering and screening techniques, and the control of specific land uses. Subject site is in a location consistent with the intent of the residential 20 future land use designation. The site is also consistent with the Greater Palm River Community Plan. The plan encourages new infill and redevelopment to be compatible with the existing community. Surrounding land uses and zoning districts would be compatible with the requested plan amendment change to residential 20. Strategy 14 specifically addresses supporting the scenic corridor designation of Causeway Boulevard and does not recommend allowing commercial intensive uses east of Maydell Drive. Subject site is east of Maydell Drive, and the change in land use category to residential 20 would no longer permit the uses allowed in the commercial intensive zoning district. Based on this, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so we have the applicant, if the applicant's present, they're available to, they're eligible to make a presentation. Each applicant has three minutes. Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Todd Pressman. I'll keep it very short and very brief. If I can share my screen, I'll give you a short version. If you can see the screen, you can see that there's a lot of intensity in the immediate area, UMU 20 in the area, RES 20 in the area. Looking even further out, you can see there's RMU 35 and OC 20 in the immediate area. Current zoning is for multi-use, as Ms. Papendrew gave a presentation, 57,400 square feet hotel, medical office, and retail. There is an approved zoning plan. Today's goal is 108 multifamily. And critically across the street has been approved a massive development of mixed use consisting manufacturing, processing, distribution, commercial, office, and retail, which this across the street would be a prime location for workforce and for employment at that site. So with that, Madam Chair, we appreciate the staff's presentation to you and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I will open it up for public comment. If you see none, I'll open it up for board discussion and/or consideration of the ordinance.
Move of approval.
Okay. We have a straw vote, please.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried 6 to 0.
Okay. And the last item for this evening's agenda is Item B6, HCCPA 2205, future land use map change on Morris Bridge Road and 127th Avenue. The Planning Commission will actually introduce the amendment.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Carla Yanos with Planning Commission Staff. This is a privately initiated, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, 22-05, Morris Bridge Road and 127th Avenue in the unincorporated Hillsborough County. Subject site is 39.6 acres within the limits of the Thonotasasa Community Plan. It's located within an urban service area and is north of, it's the northmost plan amendment for the January 2022 cycle. The property is being designated from community mixed use 12 to residential 20 and natural preservation. The applicant has provided a narrative to accompany this plan amendment request, and it states the intent is to develop the uplands with some type of multifamily possibly or other uses that are allowed under the residential 20 future land use, and the natural preservation is to preserve wetlands through some type of potentially upland preservation, sorry. The property borders the city of Temple Terrace jurisdiction and is located west of Interstate 75 Morris Bridge Road, and it's also found north of Fowler Road and abutting 127th Avenue to the north and the south. According to the Hillsborough County property appraiser, the parcel is currently vacant, and the surrounding area contains mostly single-family homes, multifamily, light commercial, major highway, public utilities, agriculture, and a few vacant lands. Staff conducted a site visit on February 10, 2022, and the following pictures were taken. This picture that you see on the screen is taken standing between the applicant's north and south parcel, facing north, looking west on 127th Avenue. Here we are in the exact same location, however, we're looking now towards the east on 127. So here you can see Morris Bridge Road, this is the beginning of it, and then you will see Interstate 75. This picture is taken facing southeast towards the applicant's south parcel, which is the largest parcel, and there you could see Morris Bridge Road. You could probably see a little bit of that pavement over here, and then you have Interstate 75, which you can see from above. On your screen, you will find an aerial shot of the property. The purpose is to give you an idea of what the site looks like from above and the surrounding uses. So here to the north, you have multifamily and commercial. To the northwest, you have single family. Then you have an easement here to the west. You also have a creek, which is known as the Cow House Creek, and you have single family here to the south. And then over to southeast, you have the multifamily component. And then obviously, in the east, northeast, southeast, you have Morris Bridge Road and Interstate 75. The property has an adopted future land use of community mixed use 12, and it is proposing to go to natural preservation in residential 20. Now residential 20 allows residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed use developments. The adopted community mixed use 12 and the proposed residential 20 will allow for the same type of uses. The proposed natural preservation, however, allows for open space and passive nature parks. Now, the area is composed of a variety of different future land use designations. So immediately to the west is the community mixed use 12, you see right here. And then over to the east is the SMU 6, which is the suburban mixed use 6. And then you have, down to southeast, you have public, quasi-public future land use. Now, I want you to pay attention a little bit to this green area, because the property does abut the city of Temple Terrace. So, yeah, and we had to do it this way because it was a little confusing, seeing all the colors meshed together. So just as a recap, this is border, and then this is with everything included in there. Now, the city of Temple Terrace, obviously, is to the north and the south. To the north is the urban mixed use 20, and to the south is the residential 9, and to the southwest is the residential 18. Um, um, are you there? Are you there? Not sure who's speaking.
Yeah, we have someone that's entering the call. Well, the Planning Commission is doing their presentation. So communications, is there, there's a call-in number?
Thank you. I'll continue. The subject site is 39.6 acres. There are a lot of wetlands on the property, and the property will be evaluated in detail at the rezoning stage. The property has an existing future land use designation of community mixed use 12, which allows a standard density of 12 dwelling units to the acre or a floor area ratio of 0.50. This would allow for a maximum of 475 dwelling units or approximately 860,000 square feet of non-residential. There is a potential, under this existing future land use category, to provide for less density and intensity due to the wetlands on site. Now, the proposed residential 20 future land use designation will occur only on 18.12 acres, which you see here in the image. Now, the rest of the property is going to be designated as natural preservation, here in the green. This would allow for a maximum of 362 dwelling units or approximately 600,000 square feet of non-residential. Natural preservation does not allow for any density or intensity. Now, overall, the request will reduce the intensity and density, as well as it removes the ability for commercial intensive purposes. Now, staff has reviewed the request and has found it consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. Objective 1 directs at least 80% of growth to happen within an urban service area, and the property is located within the Tampa service area, which is considered an urban service area. Now, Objective 2 and Policy 2.1 refers to the timing of growth and encourages new development to occur in areas that have adequate public infrastructure capacity and to discourage opportunities for bypassing urban development. This property is located within an urban service area, as previously stated, and other jurisdictions and reviewing agencies have been notified of this request, and they don't have any concerns at this very moment of the plan amendment process. Now, again, this property will probably be reviewed in detail at the rezoning stage. Now, Objective 13, Policy 13.1, Policy 13.3 indicates that new development shall not adversely impact environmentally sensitive areas. As we mentioned, the property has significant amount of wetlands, and there is a potential for upland preservation, and these calculations will be evaluated during the rezoning stage. The request is consistent with Objective 16, Policy 16.1 through Policy 16.5, which is the need to protect existing neighborhoods and communities. The request does protect existing neighborhoods by providing natural preservation, future land use designation nearest to the single family to the south, and is proposing residential similar to other residential in the neighborhood. So overall, the requested map amendment is consistent with the goal... is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The request is heard, was heard before the Planning Commission on April 11, 2022, with a vote of seven to zero for approval. Planning Commission recommends that HCCPA 22-05 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan for the unincorporated Hillsborough County, and recommends forwarding this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. This concludes staff presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The applicant has three minutes to make a presentation per applicant representative. Is the applicant present?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward and Henderson. And I have with me this evening Dallas Evans, who is our civil engineer. He is primarily here to answer any questions you might have, but I may need a couple of minutes of his time. I'm hoping to get through my presentation in the three minutes, but I do have a couple of points of clarification I think I need to make about the Planning Commission's presentation. So with that, share my screen. Are you seeing it?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, this is an overall, this is a current aerial of the site. I did want to provide you some historical aerials on this site. The property was in private ownership until 2006, and then DOT bought it, FDOT bought it for the improvements on 127th Avenue and also for right-of-way and drainage. And you could see in 2012, that project was well underway. And then fast forward to '16, the project was finished in 2014, and you can see in 2016 that it was completed. And then that brings you to the current aerial of 2022. As staff indicated, we are only asking for basically development rights in the northwest corner of this property, and we are converting the rest of the property, which is the majority of the property, 21.4 acres, to that natural preservation category, because this area includes both wetlands and also wildlife habitat. And we knew that it would be important to this board to take steps to permanently conserve that area. And you can see it has a similar designation as to off to the east. We don't have any development plans for that portion of the property at all. Just want to point you to some key staff findings. Overall, as they said, they found it compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan. And they found that that RES 20 designation maintains a medium-high-density category within the urban service area, and that that natural preservation category provides an ideal transition both to the wetlands and to the habitat as well as the single-family to the south. Staff has found there's sufficient transportation infrastructure and capacity to serve this development. And overall, the transportation analysis shows a reduction of more than 4,000 trips. Urban services are available in form of water and sewer from Temple Terrace, and we do have school capacity available. Just a couple of points of clarification with respect to the development under RES 20. I do believe, although it's .75 FAR, that there is a cap at 170,000 square feet. We're not seeking any, we have already filed a companion PD for multifamily development on the upland portion only. We're not showing any residential amenities or features in that natural preservation area. It is our complete intent to...
Ma'am, your time, your time has expired. Do you have another applicant that can finish your presentation?
No, I think, I think we're, we're fine. I would like the opportunity to answer any questions. I know there were some questions at the workshop about the preservation area, and we're here to answer the questions you might have and to clarify any intent on the point of the applicant.
Excellent, you do have an opportunity to, for rebuttal. There, this is a public hearing. We have minutes set aside for any participants, assuming there's no other applicant presentation. And I don't have anyone signed up to the, for this item. With that, we'll move to board discussion, questions?
Move for approval.
Move for approval? You have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Okay, I do have a real quick question. But Commissioner Smith, go ahead. You're recognized.
Yeah, I asked for ELAP comments on this when it came back, and I see that ELAP's comments are essentially no comment. Because this area is designated for, in, you know, as, as a, it would rank as an ELAP site, but it's policy, and well-founded policy, as their comments say, to, you know, not have that enter into discussion about whether or not we approve a comp plan amendment. I'm kind of on the bubble, what I, but I think where I land is, it's sort of a comp plan level clustering of taking the density off the natural area and putting it on the FDOT-ruined area. So I guess I'm inclined to go along with it. It seems like an okay place to put that.
Commissioner Smith, I totally understand. I had the same stunned response when I looked at the destruction that FDOT did to that location. It's not a surprise, to tell you the truth, but it's really a shame. But I did have one question. There was, you know, the creek that runs on the south side of the property. Excuse me, is that actually the applicant's creek or the neighbor's creek?
Ma'am, if you would let, if you would like staff to answer, or would you prefer the applicant?
Anybody can answer the question. Basically, it looks like the property line runs along the, you know, along the river there that is, goes underneath the bridge. It's one of the very few remaining wildlife corridors to connect all of the Morris Bridge area to the wildlife area. And it does have in the hatching that there is a significant wildlife here. So I've, you know, part of me is just not really happy with any of this. But given the way it's laid out, it looks like it's possible. But I did want to ask if what I'm concerned about is preserving that access point, who owns the river?
The river is not owned by the property owner. It's actually outside of their boundary, nor does a property owner to the south own a portion of that creek. Because they have frontage on it, they potentially could have access to it. But I believe that's managed by another entity. I would have to pull up the map and identify which entity it's actually managed by. Now, another clarification that I wanted to make is that the applicant is requesting two future land use designations. Remember that the natural preservation does not allow any density or an intensity. So the applicant's development would be based on the 18.12 acres. And if there's any type of opportunity for upland preservation, that'll be reviewed at the rezoning stage.
Understood, understood. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to see what was going to happen next door. Because this really is, it's literally the last thin line that comes down south, follows along the Hillsborough River, goes all the way down to the bay. This is it. And so there's part of me that's really torn with actually approving anything, but it's already approved for more density than what they're applying for. So I will support it as well. Any other comments? That, can you do, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I'll just say that when it comes back for rezoning, I'll... No, that I'd be interested in having a conservation easement over it, not just natural conservation area, but actual easement to protect it in perpetuity.
Yeah, understood, understood. Excellent, thank you very much. Any other comments? Please take a roll call. Does the applicant?
It was me, the staff. Just FYI, the natural preservation does have a requirement in their comp plan policy where they're required to dedicate it to some entity for permanent maintenance. So essentially, that's it. Once they designate it to NP, no density, intensity, it's going to stay as is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you. Now, we'll take a roll call.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, excellent. And what I'd like to do is consider a motion to, consider an ordinance for the adoption of the Small-Scale Map Amendment, CPA 2204 and 2205 for adoption.
Move for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith and Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, five to zero.
Excellent, seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned.